Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to East Dundee's regular board meeting. The village board, village trustees for Monday, March 18th, 2024. I have 8:15. Catherine, if you'll take the roll.
Trustee Mahoney?
Here.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Present.
Trustee Britton?
Here.
Trustee Saviano?
Here.
Trustee Tribber?
Here.
Trustee Soder?
Here.
And President Lionel.
Okay, and we will need a, a motion to allow trustee Tribber to participate by phone.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Soder?
Yes.
And President Lionel.
Yes.
If you all rise up for me for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item? Nobody, seeing none. Then we'll move on. This will take us to a public hearing. So for a request, for a variance from section 156.04(c)(1) B regarding the maximum square feet allowed for a business establishment identified, identification wall sign for a property located at 535 Dundee Avenue, East Dundee, Illinois 60118, portion of the PIN 03-26-227-007 in the B3 district, business district.
Do we need a motion to open the public meeting?
You, you can just open, you can just open the public meeting, the public hearing, and then, then you have a motion to close it at the end.
Okay, so I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to address the board on the, the item at hand? If you wish, if you can. You can, please.
If they have questions.
Sure. Would you like to take, audio?
Do I need to be sworn in?
No. Just your name and address.
Okay, my name's Karen Dodge. Address is 325 Sand Pebble in Aurora. The Elgin Mall is a vibrant community of shopping, dining, and entertainment options, all under one roof. They would like to install a 221-square-foot wall sign. The location of the tenant space is near the center of this large shopping center. It is 342 feet from Dundee Road, 350 feet from the south entrance, and 711 feet from the north entrance. The proposed sign will assist customers in wayfinding. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have anything?
Yeah, I had a question on the, when they originally appeared, it sounded like they're still deciding on a name, but now it's the Elgin Mall. It's keeping their prior name, I'm sure, for brand equity that they had and that. Is there a reason that they don't want to change it now that they're not in Elgin to avoid confusion of where they're located?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Or no?
Yeah, I was, I couldn't come, so.
Okay.
I did speak with the applicant about this in the fall, yeah, when, when I think we talked about it at the board meeting, and I reiterated our request that it not be called that. But the applicant was of the strong belief that that was vitally important to their customer base and did not wish to change it.
Is there any latitude that the village has to force that?
So, any, any business can, can name their business whatever they choose. You know, I talked with some of our staff about, Evanston used to have Evanston Subaru, and then Evanston Subaru decided to move to Skokie, and now they're Evanston Subaru.
In Skokie.
In Skokie. And there's the Evanston Golf Club in Skokie. You know, anybody can, can take any name that they want for whatever reason they want, and our only ability to regulate the naming of something is if it were to be profane or obscene or something like that. We can't regulate what a business chooses to call themselves.
Right. And I wouldn't force them to change it either, suggest that, but since they're at the gateway, like right at the intro to our town, a variance to make Elgin Market a lot larger seems like, I don't feel as motivated to allow that to be bigger just because of the more confusion that it causes people as they come into the town to see the Elgin Market, as they get into East Dundee. I don't really have a problem with the size or scale of that sign for that building, but since it is a sign kind of symbolizing and telling people they've reached Elgin, that's why I'm like, well, I don't know that it makes sense for a variance to amplify a confusing message. I mean, it would be confusing also in the long term for their patrons as they're looking them up and trying to find them, and it says they're in East Dundee, but they know it's Elgin, so then they're confused. I don't know. That's their decision, but I guess as far as the variance goes, it does seem to get confusing at the point.
I did want to share this, so, this wasn't in the packet, but this is helpful in conveying that this is smaller than the Dominick sign that it's replacing. And the, this large space, this is probably like one of the largest spaces we have in the village. It doesn't really, I don't know. I guess a picture tells a thousand words, like it kind of does tell the story.
That's why I went out and measured and put together a picture to see, understand the scale.
Yeah.
Because what was in the packet was only, you know, part of the front of this.
Right.
I also looked at, so, it's two things. The, the scale, basically, I did, did some of my designer math at looking at this, and, you know, the, the code says that it shouldn't exceed 100 square feet or, or, no, shouldn't exceed 10% of the facade, the front of the building, or 100 square feet. So.
Whichever is small.
So, yeah, and looking at this, because this is an extraordinarily large, in fact, I then went down to Walmart, and Walmart breaks up their facade, you know, the, the way that it is. So, when you take the 221 square feet against the facade, the inside of the brown, the gray trim, dark gray trim, you're looking at about 2,900 square feet for the facade itself that it's sitting on. So that brings it to a 7.62% of the facade area, well, under the 10%. Then, when we look at other signs also in that mall, there's that Sasa Bistro and Dundee Food and Liquor Mart that goes on forever. That's 160 square feet. So, in looking at the length times, and I had to estimate, but I, but by four feet tall in that little strip that's in there. So, and that's a much smaller footprint and a much smaller area that it's kind of chunked into there. The, so, so that's the one thing, and there's, you know, some others, but that are, 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 you know, close to that size in much smaller stores and much smaller footprints. And then I mentioned the Walmart, you go down to the Walmart, and just their logo sign is 360 square feet. So, and it's on a much smaller, you know, area of their facade. So, when, when I look at the other things that are on, on 25, it seems though that the facade have, you know, is, can be an exception when you look at the numbers in this context. The other thing is the branding, so the Elgin Mall, yeah, I was disappointed that that's what they wanted to go with, but, um, is there a possibility, and I've seen this in some other branding, to say Elgin Mall, and then underneath it in small letters, East Dundee? Or in East Dundee, whatever, so that it kind of, in that way, it can be kind of considered almost like a good thing. Oh, yeah, they, you know, they've been around, but they're, but they chose to be here, in East Dundee. So, they're just another thought in that process, so, that's all I had.
That crossed my mind, too.
Did it?
East Dundee's Elgin Mall or something where it also puts our town would help reconcile that, for me.
What is, can I ask you what your role is in this?
I'm an expediter. I'm with the sign company.
You're with the sign company?
Yeah.
So you wouldn't be able to bring input back to them that we're talking about right now, would you?
Well, I, yeah, I mean.
Oh, you could, okay.
On the ground sign, maybe, on the panel, putting, you know, East Dundee.
Well, if we felt strongly about the word Elgin and not using East Dundee or Dundee, we can always deny the variance, as Andy has suggested. That, that control we have.
Well, I mean, we, they're still going to have a sign up.
Yeah.
The sign, there will be a sign, it's just how, the variance is just how large the sign is. We cannot deny them the right to advertise their name.
Nope, I'm not suggesting that. But it would be less present if it were 100 square feet as opposed to 233 and a half.
It's 221.
Oh, 221, sorry.
It's kind of like Boston Market.
What?
It's kind of like Boston Market.
Yeah, Boston Market everywhere, all in the United States. There you go.
Perhaps.
St. Louis Bread Company.
But that's a chain, you know, I think there's a little bit of a difference there.
They might be working to be a chain.
So can I ask, can I ask a question? We're in the middle of a hearing, is, I don't know if this is appropriate for the discussion later or if this is acceptable for the hearing.
I, I, this often happens in public hearings where you have someone here to represent, and you're asking them questions. The, probably the appropriate procedural thing would be to, if there's no further testimony, to close the public hearing, maybe pull this off of your consent agenda and then discuss it, and then ask the representative to.
It's on for discussion later.
Oh, good, okay, yeah. So, it, that makes the record a little bit cleaner.
Okay.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And if there's nobody else in the audience that would like to address the board for the public hearing, then let entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second. Kathleen.
Trustee Soder?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And President Lionel?
Yes.
So we'll still have a discussion.
Thank you.
That'll take us to our consent agenda. Now.
And we want to remove H, or I move to remove H to discussion.
Would you like to take this one?
Oh, yeah, sorry, you're right. It was a consent, I'm so sorry. So we're wrong.
Remove H, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, that actually is under, under consent.
Would it, would it be prudent to also remove G, or does that not matter?
They go hand in hand, and it would make sense if you're, that you would adopt the findings of fact along with the, the, with the actual ordinance itself. So, you know, unless you want to pull off anything else, you, someone could buy unanimous consent, suggest taking items A through F as your consent agenda, establish your consent agenda.
Does anybody want to take anything else off?
Nope.
I will move to accept the regular village board meeting minutes dated February 19th, 2024. I'll also move to accept the warrants list in the amount of $207,915.33. I'll move to approve a special ordinance authorizing the credit, seating and private activity bonding authority. I will move to approve a resolution awarding a bid to Schroder Asphalt Services, Inc. in the amount of $549,216.44 for the 2024 Street Improvement Project and authorize a total expenditure of up to the budgeted amount of $585,000. And I will move to approve an ordinance amending Village Code, chapters 70 and 71, Traffic Code, General Provisions and Traffic Schedules. And I will move to approve a resolution amending Resolution 3123 with regard to the start time of the planning and zoning and historic commissions meetings.
Second.
One quick question before the vote. Should the expenditure be, rather than up to, not to exceed?
Is that not the same thing?
I don't know, that's my question.
The intention is not to exceed 55. So it would be up to or not to exceed?
Up to.
Yeah, up to, I think I do.
I think the wording's fine.
All right.
The wording's fine.
As it's cool. Kathleen?
Trustee Soder?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Okay. And that takes us to items G and H. Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the findings of fact regarding a variation from section 1.5604(c)(1) B regarding the maximum square feet allowed for a business establishment identification wall sign located at 535 Dundee Avenue in the B3 General Service Business District.
Second.
It may be, it may be appropriate to take those two together as an omnibus, because if you're going to adopt the findings of fact, if you're going to, that's basically saying that we, we agree with them, and so, those, those two could be taken together as an omnibus.
And as an omnibus, move to approve the ordinance granting a variation from section 156.04(c)(1) B regarding the maximum square feet allowed for a business establishment identification wall sign loaded, located at 535 Dundee Avenue in the B3 General Service Business District.
Okay, who has comments or questions? Excuse me.
So we sort of, kind of had the majority of this discussion?
I had nothing further.
Nothing further? I guess part of my thinking is kind of along with Andy's. I wish that Elgin was a smaller part of that sign, and mall could be larger. And maybe we could do, like, if we could make that suggestion or have something like that says East Dundee on it as well, I'd feel better about it because this is, it's a confusing spot for something that says Elgin. It's like, did I, did I miss a turn? Right, like, did I, did I fail to go where I needed to go? So that's my only concern with a very large advertisement for Elgin right when you're leaving Elgin and coming into East Dundee. So I, I'd like to see something that's not so predominantly a different city right there. That's my only, that's my only concern with it.
I think it's a worthwhile concern. In fact, I, I think, too, that, you know, I, I take it as a bit of a slight that the proprietors are going to keep Elgin, they're not going to embrace East Dundee. This is not a chain, this is a one-off store. I don't believe that they have such a following that will necessarily need to keep this particular name in order to retain that following. And so, while Jersey Mikes and Boston Market may be an interesting comment, I don't think we're dealing with that here, and so.
Yeah, I just, we're, we're also not dealing with the name of the business. That is their business.
Well, we don't, we don't have to deal with the name of the business, and if we don't have to, if we don't have to consider that, and we don't have any latitude or pressure to put them on, that's, that's fine, I accept that. We also don't have to grant this variance. So if your question or your concern is the size of the lettering, then by denying the, the variance, you will automatically by default get a smaller lettering, which gives you exactly what you want, Sarah.
Right, I, I am attempting to be a little more business friendly, and instead of simply denying it, have a conversation about editing the way that the sign appears.
Then that would require us to postpone this vote.
And that would be why I'm opening it up for discussion. That's what I am attempting to speak to other people on the board about, is a suggestion that perhaps we could go back and make the request to make Elgin smaller or add something about any Dundee or something like that.
I think that's a worthwhile point.
And I don't take it as a slight, I think that's an emotional response. I think they're making a business decision because it's, it's their branding, and I think that's a smart business decision for them because that's where they have their following. So I just think that it's not a personal slight to East Dundee. I think that it's just smart marketing for them.
And that, that's fine, and, and that's legitimate, and you can view it that way, and that's okay. I personally view it as a slight to East Dundee, and, you know, we, we don't agree on that, and that's, and that's fine. So I, I liked Sarah's comment about the idea of postponing the vote on this until we can get further information and find out whether or not they're willing to.
I would love to hear what anybody else thinks, though. This is one voice, okay?
Yeah, I'll add that I'd like to reach out to them and let them know that, like, that we would be okay with a larger sign, but that, given that this is at the gateway, that this particular location putting as you leave Elgin and you're into our town for a bit, and then as you're entering into our main shopping division on 25, that it says kind of welcome to Elgin. So, giving a variance to make that larger, we're not really incentivized to do, but we would like to work out a solution. We don't want that, it also looks bad to have a tiny sign on a giant building. We don't want that either. So we would like to maybe open a dialogue to see if there's any room for modifying the name of the establishment or some sort of thing that would make it clear that you're not in Elgin, like Dundee's Elgin Mall or something where Elgin's a little smaller somehow, but really for their branding, I feel like picking a descriptive term that is the town that you're not in isn't a long-term. I don't think it's going to set them up for success long-term to label it Elgin because people know that they're Elgin. I think almost any other name is probably going to work better for them long-term. Like, short-term, they may be concerned that people don't connect the two, but that's like a short-term issue that will be over in the next couple of years. And then it'll just be more confusing over time to be the Elgin Mall that's not in Elgin, but it's really close. And if you're looking it up on a map and it says East Dundee, and you're just like, well, that can't be it. I know it's the Elgin Mall. So I think it might cause frustration to their users. Maybe they've thought through all of this, but maybe not, but really just for our part, pushing them in that direction in a friendly way and offering a larger sign if we could do something that's not confusing to people as they enter the gateway.
Chris, what do you think?
Well, I, like I said, I, I would like the idea of saying something with East Dundee to not confuse them. I have no problem with the size.
The Elgin Mall of East Dundee.
Something that just has us represented, I think, would be good. Just because it is really the welcome to East Dundee, and it's a little different than that. Yeah, it is. It's a big intersection.
Rich, what are your thoughts?
I'm in agreement that there should be some form of Dundee, you know, but I'm, I'd like to see what they can come up with and come back to us. You know, we're, we're working with them, we're, you know, more than happy to have, you know, the business in town, we want it to be successful, but I would like to see some form of them willing to work with us on this one.
Good enough.
Yeah, I guess my only thought is we're not going to meet again for a month. And when is the, you know, what is your lead time? And when are they trying to open? That's what I would hope. What was that?
We could probably think they would sometime for.
For the opening?
Oh, I see what you mean, yeah. All right. I'm, I'm all for going back to them and talking a little about the name. I, I, I'm not necessarily suggesting we change the name, but I guess, yeah, I can see the point about the sign for Elgin when you're driving to East Dundee is a little strange.
Good, so, you're there, too?
Yeah. Okay, so, Elgin Mall has been in, in business, in Elgin, for over 22 years. I just want to set some records straight. They do have a very large following, that's a regional following, that's part of what attracted us to having them here. I don't think it's fair for you to say that they're slighting the village because they have put $1.2 million in improvements into that building, just the mall. Bobby, the owner of the mall, has also put incredible amounts of money into the new facade and has not taken a facade grant on it, even though it was, you know, I encouraged it, to look into it. So, I, I'm okay with the, with the sign. Would I like Elgin to be a little bit smaller? I would like to have some designation, and to the point, I would almost agree to, you know, even if it needs to get slightly taller to, to do that. Because I think if it gets any shorter, when you look at the proportion on this building, it's small compared to the building, and it was much smaller than what Dominick's was, just by letter count, so. And, and finally, you know, they, their business licenses and all of their vendors' businesses licenses are attached to the Elgin Mall. So, changing their name, I am not in favor of. They've got a brand equity, and they've got a following, and I think it's just a matter of.
Well, their business licenses are going to be all reissued once they come into East Dundee, so there won't be any attachment to Elgin. It'll be attached to East Dundee.
Yeah, I'm not asking for a DBA. I'm not asking for a DBA, I'm just asking for the signage to indicate that they're not in Elgin.
So, I mean, they do have the Elgin smaller with the line to make it, you know, the size of like one letter, so, I mean, I think they're already scaling down Elgin as, probably as much as they can. And it might be, it's going to be messy to start adding other city names to it. I feel like that's going to be worse than just letting it be Elgin Mall. So, like, I don't know, it just seems like a tough decision.
It's a tough call.
Because they're both not ideal. The, the gateway, it's unclear, but also, we don't want a tiny sign that's.
I mean, there's also that monument sign that's for the whole mall, because that's, I think that says East Dundee's Mall.
Says Dundee Mall.
Dundee Mall now.
Which will probably change because it's not Dundee Mall anymore.
Personally, I wouldn't mind also seeing a lowercase e instead of the capital. I think that might help.
That's an interesting idea. Lowercase e on Elgin, that's interesting.
I think it would just involve dialogue and see what they could come up with.
Yes, agreed.
Let their designers worry about the font, their style and all that, and see if they have.
Okay. So can we have a motion then to postpone these two until we have further dialogue with the proprietor?
Until the next meeting? And whatever, what is the next meeting?
April 15.
15. Does the person who made the original motion need to motion to postpone?
No.
No, basically, you, I mean, that motion just kind of state, stays on the table, and you would be postponing the consideration of that motion until a date's certain. And so if you have what your next calendar is, yeah.
I will move to postpone the motions to the April 15th, 2024 Board of Trustees meeting.
Second.
Kathleen? Trustee Soder?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us then to our other agenda items. Item B is being scratched. But we now have a, item A, which is a Spongy Moth Program discussion. So, either, well, Kathleen, would you like to run with this one? Or do you have other, I mean, is there new things to?
I, I think Phil had some, has some updates, right?
Sure, yes. Good evening.
Just knew you'd been connected to it.
I don't have much to add to some of the items in the slideshow presentation, but did want to emphasize a couple of points, is that according to the Illinois Department. but did want to emphasize a couple of points is that according to the Illinois Department of Agriculture, we're in a good position going forward. And that, it appears that the treatment did what it was supposed to do last year. And that, in fact, in my PowerPoint, I talked about possibly not needing to treat again for at least ten years. Ten plus years. I'll just go through a couple of points in the, in the slideshow. The Department of Agriculture did indicate that we are surrounded by very strong, significant populations, infestations in our surrounding area as well as our region. The spongy moth has exploded in recent years. And unfortunately, some of the communities and areas are not kept up with the treatments, for example, like we have and so on and so forth. And this is mainly our situation here in East Dundee. Our trap counts post-treatment last year were very low compared to some of the trap counts in other communities, which were into the thousands. Ours were into the, in some cases, less than ten. Some of the traps closer to our border areas, particularly on the north end, were a hundred plus. But again, that causes no concern when I spoke with the folks at the Department of Agriculture. And as I indicated on slide one here, it's mainly because a lot of these male moths were either, either flew in T-Stundy or were blown in T-Stundy via winds. I'll just briefly touch base on what we've done to this point. In twenty twenty-two, we set up twenty-five traps targeting two main areas. That was Lakewood Estates and the Terrace. We also had infestations in, in the Flats area. As a result, in twenty twenty-three, we had two aerial treatments of BTK. And then subsequent to the treatments, we set out an additional twenty-five traps. And on the map, the very last page is the map of the twenty, well, we collected twenty-four of the twenty-five traps. One went missing, but essentially you see we have high counts up here in Lakewood. We had high counts here as well. And then we had some high counts along the river. So that is somewhat indicative of some of the male moths either flying in from surrounding towns or being blown in from via winds. And then of course, so we had twenty, twenty-four of the twenty-five traps were collected in August. Let's see, the aerial treatment. So all of our treatment area, our entire treatment area is west of Route twenty-five. And we believe that the treatment was effective in killing most or all the feeding caterpillars last year. And of course, the males that fly into or are blown into East Dundee don't have a meeting partner with the female population as they may have been eliminated through treatment. So again, that's really no cause of concern for us or the Department of Agriculture. Trap in each of the trap, the thermo-invented traps has an effective radius of approximately half a mile. So if you look at the map here, it does seem to demonstrate that some of these moths are and or blowing from other areas compared to some of the lower populations further south and further east. Can I touch on some of this? Recommendations for twenty twenty-four. As I mentioned, Department of Ag believes that we're in a very good position. We'll continue to trap again this year. The Department of Ag will provide us with an additional twenty-five traps. At some point, we'll install them, I want to say late May, early June. And so we'll track those and map those populations. We'll collect them sometime in August. And we'll continue to monitor for any females or the egg masses that may show up at some of the areas that we had strong infestations last year. And the Department of Ag also commented that they, this year, because of the explosion of the spongy moth population region-wide, they're going to be treating very minimally this year. In fact, they may only have one or two treatment areas throughout their jurisdiction.
Why is that? I mean, they're, are we seeing an expansion of the infestation? And they're going to cut back?
They're going to, they're going to cut back just because it's, it's.
It's such a big area.
It's too big of an area. And they don't treat the same areas in consecutive years.
Okay, oh, they don't.
They don't.
I see.
Correct, yes. So they don't treat areas that they treated last year, they won't treat again. In fact, they don't treat probably for a number of years.
Okay, so that comment there isn't, isn't a recommendation of any sort. That's just a comment.
For their site.
For their site.
The Department of Ag is, they're going to have minimal treatment in their, on their properties.
Gotcha. So not all for spending money, but would we have any benefit to doing it again in the second year? I mean, and really knock it out? Or, I mean, you're saying in the next ten years, but would we end up with residents who are going to be situated or in the same situation in six, seven years that they were last year? And, you know, because it was pretty bad up there in Lakewood especially. And so, and also too, do we know if the Cook County Forest Preserve has treated any of the land to the east of us?
That I do not know.
I mean, I don't know.
What's transpired in Cook County. But to answer your first question, we don't have any reason to believe that treatment will be necessary in East Dundee for, for many years to come. And we're going to monitor closely in the coming years to assess that. Again, the, the females don't fly. They essentially just, they evolve from caterpillar to, to an adult female moth and then.
So if they haven't hatched over the winter, if they haven't overwintered in East Dundee as in an egg mass and hatched, they, they would, there's, there's no females.
Okay, cool. So we're going to need Judy to keep an eye on them.
Actually, Phil has done, I, I gotta give kudos here because Phil saved me the trouble of forwarding all of this information to the, the neighbors that really helped inform the village a lot and alert the village about a lot of this.
Hit pretty hard.
Yeah, and some of the people that were most involved have said that they have not and had spotted egg masses on their trees, have not spotted them this year. So there's, there's good news. And I've been around my property and I've been looking, I've been looking and looking and looking for it. Because, you know, it was like, ah, the, the trap count was really high at my house. But it's also a different kind of trap than the previous year. So it, it naturally traps more than the ones from the previous year. So, but if compared to everything else that's out there, it's really low. And I think also thanks to the spraying last year. I know, I noticed and also looking around and my neighbors that have talked to me have noticed that there was less leaf defoliage from, from the last summer because of the, because of the spring. So it's, it's, it's all good news.
I'm just wondering, you know, like I say, I don't want to spend money needlessly. I'm just wondering if there's any benefit to really knocking it out and doing it. But I'd also have to raise the point I did last year, which was, you know, without Carpenter'sville's buy-in on this on the north end of Lakewood, it really, it's kind of like throwing sand against the.
And West Dundee as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, West Dundee too, but especially Carpenter'sville because there's an awful lot of oak trees on that north edge of Lakewood. And if, you know, we spray ours, but they don't spray theirs, you know, what are we doing? You know, how effective is it all going to be? So, well, then, who knows? If we keep an eye on it for the next couple of years, you know, if we don't see, these things are really disgusting. I've been to a number of people's homes that had the problems and, I mean, it's eerie. I mean, just.
Caterpillars were a little, yes.
It's really gross. Really creepy.
I'm just encouraged by that first statement right up there.
Right.
Illinois Department of Agriculture believes we're in a good place, doesn't need it for ten years. They're the experts. Yay.
Absolutely. They're very competent. So I'm optimistic that, I believe that spraying last year was the right thing to do for the community. And I'm optimistic that we'll, we're in good shape at least in the near future going forward. And we'll continue to monitor, keep an eye on the areas that are susceptible to.
Thank you for your work on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, Phil wrapped it.
Thanks, Phil. All right. Any other questions, comments, spongy moth work? No, good. Okay, that'll take us to the reports. I'll just start off by saying that I just want to tip my hat to everybody for the St. Patty's Day Parade. Again, it was a, a real big hit. Lot of people, you know, the weather could have been a little bit warmer, but what are you going to do? But just everybody, I mean, from staff, Catherine, to, you know, certainly the McMe family, Phil's group, you guys, you know, really did yeoman's work on that, so I appreciate it. And that really is all I have, so we'll start out with Andy.
Wanted to point out or thank Phil's crew. Reported there's flooding at First and Michigan.
Oh, yeah.
And, yeah, whenever there's a big rainfall, it gets like this deep and covers both sidewalks. And his crew, after seeing a photo, found a plug. And one of the inlets met up with a crew that was out there for something unrelated. They jetted it and cleared it somehow, shook the rain.
Cool.
Well, and that's been a problem for years. So it's great to wrap it up. Just send pictures of things that go wrong to Phil and then fixes it.
Good.
And then that's it. I'll let you do the St. Patty's Arts Council.
Okay, so first of all, thanks, Phil and everyone, please, for the success of the St. Patrick's Day Parade being on the committee. I think it's ten years now and just every time it's done, we exhale big, but it's so successful. And it's nice to see everyone smiling that we've kind of been looking forward to it. And our businesses make a lot of money and it's good for them. So it was wonderful. And then congrats to, East Dundee Arts Council actually did a vote for the most creative shamrock display this year. And the winner was River Lee's Pub because they had made a backdrop and took pictures of people holding the shamrocks for Fish Food Pantry and D three hundred pantry and took pictures and put them up on their screen that it slid, like, did like a slideshow. And so it was really fun. And so we awarded them the certificate on Sunday, so yesterday. So it was really awesome.
Okay, what do you got?
Yeah, I would also, I guess, like to thank Catherine for helping out with the parade and getting us some candy to pass out to the kids. I would like to add money to the budget for next year for getting more candy so I can give more than one piece to each child.
That's why she marched. That you weren't going home with it all.
I'm going to do the same thing. I'm going to donate to the effort next year as well.
But, yeah, that's all, that's all I have.
Cool. Kathleen?
Great parade, good kickoff to the spring, summer season as we kind of ramp up. I think the next thing is we've got the market opening, the eleventh of May. That's starting up and then a bunch of other things are soon to follow. Chief, I just have one question for you with regards to St. Patrick's Day. On the bi-weekly report, I noticed you had about ten incidents that you were covering on that day. Yeah, was that, is that average? Is it unusual?
That's unusually high, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and we had seven staff working that night, so we were, we were well-prepared for it. But, yeah, with the festivities, brings issues as well.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That seemed, it seemed high to me too, so, okay. That's all I have.
Sarah?
No report.
No report, okay. Attorney Weiss, anything? Oh, Rich, gosh, I'm sorry. Rich, do you have anything?
No report, but thank you.
You're kind of thin over there, so.
Yeah, I shrank a little bit. Good diet.
All right.
No report for me. I just wanted to recognize that Casey, Kelsey, not Casey, Kelsey Nola from our office is here shadowing us today and providing essential moral support for me.
You guys have kind of stole my thunder. I wanted to thank everybody's efforts for the parade. I thought it went very well. Police-related issues, we had a missing person reported who was missing for about thirty seconds. That was an issue.
Little one?
I've got a forward.
Oh. Oh, that was in your.
Thanks to Caleb. I completed a PSA video of my ugly mug talking about our animal control. We put on a religious sites soon.
Great.
We, we can have.
Go.
I'm a bad actor, he's a great editor. Also referenced the parade, learn Catherine to never get arrested. She's extremely claustrophobic.
Can't sit in that bed.
Square card, I can go.
Thank you. I took the head. In the cage with Mahoney.
Joe?
No report.
Chris?
No report.
All right, Phil?
Just a quick note, on depot, we have, case some of you don't know, we removed all the picnic tables, which were very heavy and very challenging to move. We're replacing those with square tables that are a little lighter, easier to move around. And we'll also be installing some media pads for, to the tables, which are missing one bench on one side for wheelchair access. And area, core area, the laundry, so, so we've got some lawn improvements in conjunction with bathroom project. Case your curiosity, I should have put them in.
That'd be very good.
That reminds me, Chris, do you still need that paint from me?
If you have it.
Okay.
If you don't, we'll, we'll move some on.
Okay. No, but I do have the swatches, so I'll get those, but I'm pretty sure.
The exterior?
Yeah, you want it because we, the doors and then the actual gray. So I, I have some left over, but I need to dig it up. I have it over at my shop, so I'll get back to you. Brandon?
No.
Anything? No? Good. Okay.
It's okay, no report, thank you.
No report. Okay. That takes us to an executive session and I believe we're going to be going into it for a few minutes. Or we're going to postpone it. Okay, that would be wonderful. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, thank you all. I know it was a long one tonight. Appreciate everyone's involvement.
Well, the question is, did I pass?